Okay, we'll call to order the Moore City Council meeting scheduled for May 5th. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith. Sid Porter.
Here.
Melissa Hunt. Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark. Mark Ham.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is our consent docket. Make a motion, we approve the consent docket, items A through F. Second. We've had a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Would you call the roll?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item three. Consider adoption of Resolution Number 10725 pertaining to the general obligation bonds of 2025, approved by the majority of qualified voters at an election held November 14th, 2023, fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor and council, this is our annual bond draw on what's been authorized by the voters previously. And this is the amount that's been suggested to us by our financial advisor. Our financial advisor and our bond counselor here to answer any questions recommend approval.
Are there any questions from council? Okay. Make a motion, we approve. Second. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item four is consider an amendment to rezoning application number RZ-1049, PUD design statement to reduce the number of allowed uses to only those allowed under C3 general commercial district by right in addition to establishments providing light automotive repair and require six of the 10 trees for the lot be placed within the landscape buffer with automatic irrigation system, minimum tree height at maturity of 20 feet, with said trees being classified as evergreen for screening purposes.
Mayor and council, items number four and five on your agenda are companion items. This subject site is located north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe Avenue. The property is currently zoned C3 general commercial district and is vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the commercial space to be utilized as a light automotive repair shop. That's a use that is more intense than those allowed under the C3 zoning district by right. To achieve the desired development, the applicant is requesting a rezoning to C3 as a planned unit development. Water and sewer for this development will be extended to serve the site. Stormwater detention is provided by the existing detention pond for the Oak Ridge Crossing North addition. This is located to the north of the property. There is no FEMA flood plane located on the site. Access is provided by Southwest 34th Street through a private access drive that runs north and south from Southwest 34th Street to serve both this subject property and the lot to the west. The applicant is utilizing a planned unit development or PUD to allow the automotive and equipment light use unit classification in the C3 general commercial district zoning district while providing protections to preserve the integrity of nearby residential neighborhoods. By utilizing a PUD, the city may relax certain requirements in exchange for amenities that would not otherwise be required. This PUD proposal includes the following amenities and building restrictions. The building limited to one story in height, a minimum of 20-foot landscaping buffer between the east property line and any improvements such as the parking lot. A monument sign will be utilized with a maximum area of 60 square feet per side and a maximum height of 20 feet, and no outdoor storage to be allowed on the site at any time. The proximity to the Blue Stem Ridge addition requires a higher level of scrutiny in regards to light and noise trespass along with the outdoor storage of vehicles that is typically seen with automotive repair. Although originally submitted as a straight zoning application, after the March 11th Planning Commission hearing for the proposed conference of plan amendment, the applicant amended the rezoning request to a PUD with certain protections for the neighborhood. Those were outlined previously. The envisioned Moore 2040 plan calls this location to be neighborhood commercial. Land uses allowed in the neighborhood commercial district include office, retail, and service uses that are intended to serve the immediate area. The application was reviewed as to its conformance with the intent of the plan, and due to the amenities and protections offered by the PUD, staff believes that this application is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and amendment to the plan is not necessary. This application seeks to rezone an undeveloped lot north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Santa Fe to support a commercial use that may not be compatible with surrounding uses in all circumstances. And this, again, is primarily due to the utilization of outdoor storage and the potential for light and noise increase due to the normal business operations of a light automotive repair shop. The proposed PUD formalizes an increased green belt setback to act as a transitional buffer to the Blue Stem addition to the east, height restrictions for the building and monument sign, and a provision that no outdoor storage should be on the lot. And these items do work to address most of the concerns. However, it should be noted that traditionally automotive repair establishments do generate noise that could impact neighboring residential properties. City staff did conduct a sound meter testing at existing similar businesses and found that the average noise generated was within an acceptable level for urban residential areas, but results may vary depending on the operation plan of the establishment. Just as an example, I went to a light automotive repair shop this weekend in a highly commercialized area, and they did have all the bay doors open on a Saturday morning, and the cars humped as they went in and out of the business. So just be aware that depending on the operations of the business, it can vary. Planning Commission had discussions at length regarding protections for Blue Stem addition. Ultimately, they proposed the following amendments to the PUD design statement on the floor. Those amendments are to reduce the number of allowed uses to those listed under the C3 zoning districts as uses permitted by right, so anything that you would not have to normally have a rezoning application for, and for light automotive repair only. So this would exclude businesses that are more likely to have noise trespass, such as a car wash, alarm, and stereo installer, things like that. The second item would be that of the 10 trees that are required by city code to meet the landscaping requirements on this lot, six of these trees must be provided in the eastern landscape buffer adjacent to the Blue Stem Ridge addition. These six trees must be served by an automatic sprinkler system and must be evergreen for screening purposes and reach a minimum height of 20 feet at maturity. This was an on-the-floor amendment by the Planning Commission, and the applicant did agree to these items. So Planning Commission, there was no one at the Planning Commission from the citizens who spoke in support or opposition to this application, and that was at both of the previous meetings that we held before. If council accepts these amendments, staff does recommend approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, normal business hours?
The applicant is here, and they can speak to the business operations.
The applicant, if you'd just come up, we have a few questions for you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Gunner Joyce with Rieger Sadler Joyce, 136 Thompson Drive. And this is Larry Battison on behalf of the applicant Battison Properties.
And I live at 4313 Hackney Wick Road in Norman.
Thank you.
I can sure answer the question about business hours. Basically, 7:30 in the morning to 7 o'clock at night.
Seven, 7:30 to 7:00, okay. Monday, are you closed on Sunday?
Closed on Sunday, yes, sir, yes.
Any other questions? I don't think I have any.
If I may, I'd like to address the noise issue if I can. Many of these repair shops have what they call an open bay format, and our facility is a closed bay, and all the bays are enclosed inside. Obviously, there's a door to get inside, but it's all enclosed. So the noise level's going to be very, very low.
But under normal operations during the day on a summer day, the doors would be up?
No, they'd be closed because it's air-conditioned, sir.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for letting me say that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Elizabeth?
We got one more question.
For Elizabeth.
Oh, for Elizabeth, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you.
I was listening to some stuff, you know, putting a buffer in trees and all that, and a buffer of 20 feet, is that what?
A minimum of 20 feet. It's actually at an angle, so the smallest point of that buffer would be 20 feet. It does expand larger than that.
And the residents, did we speak to anybody that lives in that neighborhood, or?
No, they all received notices in the mail. We had two separate meetings regarding this item, and we did not have anyone show up to the meeting, and I don't believe that anyone called with any concerns.
Okay, I'm just kind of, I still have concerns about...
Is there anyone here tonight?
Go ahead.
Is there anyone here tonight?
No, I'll get to that once y'all are done, I'll...
Okay.
And I'm just curious on that. I know that a lot of times, you know, citizens aren't necessarily going to come in because they don't know, you know, they disregard it, expect others to look out for them on that. I mean, kind of concerned because the noise, as close as it is to that neighborhood, especially if you're the ones whose backyard backs up to it. And I know we're talking about light, mechanical right now, but what happens if you happen to have, you know, later? Could it be on putting in an engine, you know, we've got to test that? And our car's going to be, you know, those vehicles, if they need to test drive them. I mean, we've got a school on the corner, we've got a little daycare right there on Santa Fe, and right now that area is kind of quiet, and a lot of kids walking to school back and forth. And I just wonder if that's going to increase a lot of traffic back in there and more noise. So that was my concern.
To that point, when we were at Planning Commission, the second time around, similar comments came up about asking for full light automotive uses. And so this, item number four, is an amendment to an original PUD draft that asked for all light industrial uses. Now we're striking it back, so it's just C3, which is allowed by right today, and only basically this oil change shop. So we originally started as straight zoning to a higher commercial for the light industrial. We had to come to Planning Commission first time for a comp plan amendment. The comments we received at Planning Commission were essentially that, that we're worried not so much about this potential applicant and this design, but opening the door to more automotive uses. So we actually went back, came back to Planning Commission with the change of the application. Instead of straight zoning to a PUD, the second Planning Commission meeting, they still had some concerns that that language was broader. So that's item four tonight, as we've even taken it even farther back to just this use in addition to what's allowed by right, the commercial C3 allowances. So we think we've addressed the future uses by making it just very specific to this oil change shop essentially, or the C3 uses that are allowed today.
But you could change it later if you needed to.
For an additional automotive use? You have to come back through this whole process again, right?
Okay, nobody signed up to speak on this topic, but is there anybody here that wants to? Okay, we just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
No.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item, are we at five?
Yeah.
Item five is consider rezoning application number RZ-1049, located in the southwest quarter of Section 27 Township 10, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th Street and east of South Santa Fe Avenue from C3 general commercial district to C3 PUD general commercial district planned unit development and approved ordinance number 3525, application by Battison Properties LLC, Gunner Joyce. Planning Commission recommended approval 62. Nothing more?
Nothing more.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Will you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
No.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Item six, consider rezoning application number RZ-1050, located in the southeast quarter of Section 3 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Cass Avenue and east of North Shields Boulevard from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to C5 PU Automotive and Commercial Recreation District with permissive use for automotive and equipment heavy and approved ordinance number 3625, application by Prime Collision Works LLC, Eric Gardia. Planning Commission recommended approval 80.
Mayor and council, this site is located west of North Shields Boulevard and south of Cass Avenue. The site consists of one lot. It totals approximately one acre with an existing commercial building on the site. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to a C5 with a permissive use for automotive and equipment heavy that allow an auto body business with a paint booth. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Access is provided by North Shields Avenue and Cass. The envisioned Moore 2040 plan calls this location to be transitional commerce. Transitional commerce is characterized by heavier commercial, light industrial, and some supporting office uses, creating a separation between major roads and neighborhoods. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the comprehensive plan. Because the C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District uses are existing, and there is no further encroachment into the Lakoma neighborhood, an amendment to the comprehensive plan is not required. Permissive uses by definition are uses that may not be appropriate in all areas within the underlying zoning due to potentially undesirable characteristics. Each permissive use application should be viewed as unique and evaluated on their own individual merits. Much of the surrounding area is currently dominated by automotive uses. The applicant is seeking to add a permissive use to the property within the C5 zoning category to allow for the heavy automotive and equipment heavy use unit classification. Although he wants to do an auto body shop, it is important to note that if approved, other uses within this use unit classification would also allow for repair of larger vehicles such as boats and recreational vehicles. Because the proposed use is not changing the site or the property, and the area contains a high volume of commercial automotive uses, a permissive use of automotive and equipment heavy is not anticipated to negatively affect the surrounding area, and staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council?
What exactly is going to go in there?
It's an auto body shop with a paint booth. So anytime a car repair requires, a paint booth, they're required to rezone to this heavier use unit classification.
An auto body shop?
Yes.
And is, I'm sorry, I should know, but is it part of our code that they'll have air filtration system? I know paint can produce...
Yes, that was actually discussed at length at the Planning Commission. They will usually buy paint booths that comes in a kit or a one-unit thing, item, that's shipped in. So that's all connected, yes. Air filtration, yes.
That's the question, because that came up before, so that's taken care of.
This is in the same area where that last one was, just across Shields, right?
Yes, yes.
Is the applicant here? Did you want to say anything?
Talking about his question about the paint booth, we are purchasing a brand-new unit from a facility that builds them, customize, and they come and install it with the filters, the necessary filters to filtrate the paint before it comes out.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're doing all of that. And we're also going to fence the building, so when you're driving through Shields, you don't see the vehicles being dismantled.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody signed up. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this? I just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Item seven is consider approving work order number three with Garver LLC in the amount of $199,800 for design improvements to wastewater treatment plant digester building as part of the master agreement for professional services.
Mayor and council, recall, last year we had an item come before you because of the headworks building at the wastewater treatment plant because of corrosion from the hydrogen sulfide gas. The same event is occurring in the digester building, and we need to come up with a solution to go ahead and take care and address the hydrogen sulfide that's causing corrosion and damage to the roof and the building itself. The solution for this particular building would be to actually remove the building itself, including the roof, and install new corrosion-resistant covers over the digester so we don't have to worry about the building itself. And then also odor ducts would be installed at each digester to pull the odorous air directly from each tank. This would allow us, by approving this, this would allow us to bid both projects at one time, sometime in the late fall, and construction would start next year.
So the $199,800 is for the design of that?
This is for the design of the digester building.
And we're going to pay for this out of what?
We'll pay for this out of the MPWA funds that we have.
All right, okay. Anybody else? No? Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Would you call the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Item eight is consider declaring thermal imagers and fire hoses described in Exhibit A as surplus and obsolete, and each having a value of less than $1,000, and authorize the items to be donated to Noble, Sauterville, Lexington, Little Axe, and Cedar Country Fire Departments.
Mayor and council, these thermal imaging cameras in question have seen hard use. They're obsolete at this point. They've all been replaced by newer units. The fire hose in question has exceeded its 10-year service life by the industry standards. We recommend a donation of this to the volunteer departments that could maybe piece mill these together and satisfy some of their needs.
Make a motion to...
Yep, no, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And I'm always glad to see that we're able to give some of this equipment to smaller departments, and they're all here within Cleveland County, so they'll get a use for it. Would you call the vote, please?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. At this time, we're going to recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine is the consent docket. Make a motion, we approve the consent docket, items A and B.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. We'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 10 is the consent docket. Make a motion, we approve the consent docket, items A and B.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. All members that were present are still present. Item 11 is new business. Item A is Citizens Forum for Items Not on the Agenda. I did have some signed up. I would ask that when you come up to speak, just give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. And we'll start with Mr. Justice Chandler.
Howdy. I had placed a few items on each of your desks. It's from Attorney General Getner Drummond. I'd like to start off by reading some scripture. This is First Timothy, Chapter 4, and that is verses 12. "Don't let anyone look down on you because you are young, but set an example for the believers in speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, and in purity." We are looking down on our youth today, in our municipality and in our community. And that's because of our freeholder clause within the city charter. We're just neglecting our political youth and our young Americans. As my former band director, Jeffrey Clifton, would say, "Why? Why are we doing this to ourselves? Why hasn't this been fixed? And why have I been steered wrong personally?" Especially by our city attorney, whose sole purpose is to represent the city council. This, I had called at some point and asked if this clause was justified, and I was given the answer that it was. I'm not able to run for office because of it, because I don't own land. And just being younger, I had thought I didn't fight this because why had I just gotten the answer from the city attorney? I had figured out just recently that this was incorrect legal advice given to me, and it hurt me. It damaged my future. It damaged my voters, and it damaged my constituents in the city. I had spent some time at the state capitol doing some work over there, and I had met many people, and one of these wonderful people would be Attorney General Getner Drummond. Getner Drummond and I spoke about the municipality of Moore in this clause within the city charter, and we talked a while. I had asked, "So my city wants to put this up to a vote of the people because it's a city charter amendment. That's standard procedure." And he said, "No, this is illegal. The Supreme Court has ruled that this is illegal. They need to fix it via a motion or a..." Let me look. I have it right here. "They need to fix it via a motion or through a resolution of the city council." So I had taken that advice, and I had emailed him just to get a statement, and I think that email is on your desk as well. So it is, in fact, illegal to have a freeholder clause within the city charter stated by the U.S. Supreme Court. That's why we need to hold our city officials accountable. That being from the Attorney General to our city attorney, no different. Because this is not liberty and justice for some, it's liberty and justice for all. And we need to make sure that because our founding fathers died for that, we should die on that hill the same as they did. And I'd like to actually get, I know it's in the procedure to ask Mayor Ham if I could get some on-the-record responses from the city council talking about the freeholder clause.
I will direct our city manager to get with our city attorney and look at this and give us a decision. If we need to remove this from our charter, then, you know, by all means, let's do it, whatever we need to do.
Of course. All right, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Justice. The next people to be heard are Ted and Sharon Sanderson.
I'm here, Sharon Sanderson, from 112 South Morgan Drive, Moore, Oklahoma. We moved in there in 1989. We love our neighborhood. We've had a wonderful group of neighbors. It's a great place to have raised our family and now our 12 grandkids. But it is becoming a fear of ours that we won't be long living in this home. My next-door neighbors are here, and they will be selling, is what I've heard. They're considering moving because they have redone their... They're not, they're, they're considering moving because they have redone their house three times now because of flooding. And I understand, you know, things happen, things change, but we've lived in this house since nineteen eighty-nine and we've never had water in our home yet. And our kids, when we moved there, were five, our oldest, he would stand out in the street after a good, good running rain with a bucket and capture the fish that are coming out of the duck pond. And then he'd walk them back and put them over when the rain quit. Well, now if he went out to do that, he'd be washed away. It's that bad. And I've got video, but I didn't know how to attach it or anything. Teddy took video the night of this most recent storm that flooded several of our neighbors' homes. Our next door neighbors was, was amazing to us. We could not walk out on our porch because the water was this far from coming into our front door. Had we opened our screen, it would have. We had a good screen, so it kept the water out of our home. And our, our house extends beyond our front screen, but luckily our builders did a good job, so water did not seep in. Otherwise, we would have had considerable damage ourselves. We've got pictures from several years ago when the water was in our garage all the way up to our kitchen. And it was about an inch from coming in and my kitchen step is about this tall. So it's getting progressively worse now that our neighbors are, you know, losing property and, you know, their home stuff. Something's gotta be done. I don't know what... That's why we're here tonight to say we need something to be done. And if nothing else, at least zone it as a flood zone so I can get insurance. Because right now, I'd be at a loss of everything. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to see my pictures, I'll, I'll try to forward them to you. They're pretty significant.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. And you can find our emails on the city's webpage.
Okay.
Yeah. And our numbers are up there too, if you need something. The flooding was obviously record breaking this last round with the rains. I'm, I'm sorry to hear it sounds like though it's a, a growing problem over the course of years that we need to keep looking into.
And the other person that I have signed up to speak is Terry Gates.
Yes, sir. I'm Terry Gates, address twenty-one oh one Southeast Thirty-Eighth Street. I've got some documentation I'd like to hand out to the council members and the-
Hand it to Councilman Webb and he'll pass it around.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. And just give your shirt. Did you already give your address?
Yes, I did. Twenty-one oh one Southeast Thirty-Eighth Street. But a lot of the details here comes out of the Moore, City of Moore's comprehensive stormwater management and master drainage plan final report. A lot of great information in that report, by the way. Thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna run through this as quickly as I can. My objective in this is just to inform everyone here regarding the events of the, the flooding events of May sixth, twenty fifteen, of the event of June, twenty twenty-four, and of this last event, April nineteenth of twenty twenty-five. This is to find a timely solution to the ongoing flooding issue, hopefully. Our property at one oh four South Ramblin Oaks was flooded the first time on May sixth, twenty fifteen. It should be noted, our house is not in a designated flood zone. FEMA assistance was available, however, and we were not eligible. Our son and his family was living at this residence on May sixth of twenty fifteen. He along with seven others were in a cellar across the street at one oh nine South Ramblin Oaks, his neighbor. The drainage and culvert behind that house points directly at the back of that property, but it became stopped up with debris, overfilled, and thus flooded that cellar with those folks inside. After several attempts to open the cellar door, water was coming in over the air vent. They were finally able to open that door had, had there not been two gentlemen there strong enough to do so because they were covered with water. They finally were able to get out, exited the submerged and flooded cellar. This terrifying situation was featured on News Four on June twenty-fourth of twenty fifteen. We can provide a copy of that article if necessary. But fast forward in June of twenty twenty-four, same house at one oh four South Ramblin Oaks flooded a second time and again on April nineteenth of this year. All three times, we incurred extensive out-of-pocket expenses due to the flooding damage. This has become a life or death situation and the problem has progressively gotten worse and so we're just looking for for those causes, basically. The minutes from the July twenty sixteen city council meeting states, "The flooding issue in our area was caused by the Central Church of Christ property runoff located at Eastern and East Main Street." Minutes of that meeting indicated, indicated by the assistant city manager at the time, looked at the problem and agreed, and I quote, "The dike installed along east boundary of Central Church of Christ property did not extend far enough south. Following a rainstorm, the water can't drain fast enough and overflows the berm," end of quote. "We believe the flooding in our area began after the church was built in the fall of twenty fourteen." Because six months later, our house flooded on May sixth. That was the first time since we've owned that house. The City of Moore's comprehensive stormwater management and master drainage plan final report dated January of twenty seventeen was a direct result of the extensive flooding on May fifth through the May eighth, through May eighth of twenty fifteen. That final report states, "A public meeting was held on May fourteenth of twenty fifteen specifically pertaining to the flooding that occurred across the city on those four days." "Our area of the city has been a known flooding problem since twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen." The data gathered from local citizens, including many of us here tonight, and city staff, was used to, to guide the development of the city's draining plan. A total of seventy-one problem areas were documented based on detailed analysis and thirty-five recommended plans were developed, which is a great thing. Each of the identified projects were prioritized based on several objective criteria and is described in section nine of the Storm Water Management and Master Drainage Plan Final Report. The conclusion of the report states, "The recommendation for problem area twelve, which our house is located within, which includes area thirteen, would be to construct a new storms..." I'm sorry? Okay, would, to construct a new sewer, storm sewer system, which would convey, which can convey a one-hundred-year storm event because of the current storm sewer system capacity is less than a one-year storm. So I would just conclude, I've got six questions and I don't know how we could handle these questions in the, in the amount of time that we have. But I would just ask, why is the flooding recommendation not completed within this eight, within eight years since that report was finalized? My second question would be, "Has the continued new development of Southeastern changed the topography and water detention such that the flooding has worsened in the last couple of years?" And then question three, "Does the city require new building permits to include studies for flooding effects of any proposed building site?" Question four, "Is Southeastern now contributing to the flooding issues for East Main and South Ramblin Oaks?" Question five, "Are the improvements to South Bryant and East Main Street contributing to the backfilling of water and therefore the flooding upstream?" And then final question, number six, "Are there any funds allocated in new building contracts or permits to provide financial relief for residents when flooding damages occur as a result of new construction?" And then in, in closing, I'd like to conclude with this state, am I out of time?
Yeah.
Anyway, I appreciate the time for us to present this information. There's a lot of details there, so thank you very much.
Well, we have, we have your six questions here, so I'm gonna make sure that the council members can get all of these questions and then I'll give them to our city manager and we'll get them addressed and your contact information is here and we'll, we'll get you answers to them.
Thank you, Mayor.
I can't just share that, obviously, East, well, Saturday was that a couple of weeks ago? That was an amazing amount of rain that we had in a very short period of time and it just overwhelmed our storm drains. And because of that, I reached out to our city manager and I reviewed our, the plan that you just referred to and actually had a brief meeting today with our city manager about possible plan of action. The, the hard part is it's going to be millions of dollars. This isn't something that we can fix with a half-million-dollar project. It's gonna be a multimillion-dollar project and we've got to figure out how to pay for that. But we are actively looking at it and how we're gonna do it. Our city manager will be meeting with the city council members that he hasn't met with and then ultimately the council will get together and figure out what we want to do. So again, this is not something that we can fix in six months. It's going to take some time. But we've, we do have to figure out what to do for some of the flooding that we have. But I would say that when we have that kind of rain in that short period of time, there's gonna be flooding. I don't know that there's anything that we could do to address that amount of water. But we are looking at flood zones and where homes are located and expanding the drainage system and the amount of water, water that they can carry, detention ponds, all of that stuff. So thank you, the both, both of you, really all of you, those that didn't speak, if you're here in reference to this, for being here and letting us see you. And again, reach out to your council people with your concerns and you can reach out to me as well if you have additional questions and we'll be glad to answer. Now that is all that I have signed up. Is there anybody else in here that would like to speak?
I had a quick question for him, clarification. You said you lived at twenty-one oh one Southeast Thirty-Eighth.
Yes.
But the property that flooded was one oh four South Ramblin Oaks.
I lived there prior to moving to our-
Okay, and then your-
My son lived there at that location on that, for flooding of twenty fifteen.
So you did have a property flood this time?
Still own the property. We've repaired it. We're-
Oh, okay.
This is our third phase of now stripping-
I'm looking at it on Google Earth. I just wanna make sure I'm looking at it correctly. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no problem. Just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right one.
Is there something, where you want to speak? Anybody else wanting to speak? Yep. If you do, just come forward, give us your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Sorry, Tana Gates, I just wanted to add something real quick to what Terry was saying that he didn't get to include. The prioritized list of improvements in the comprehensive stormwater management drainage final report shows that our house at one oh four South Ramblin Oaks, identified in problem area twelve and thirteen, is fourth on that list and was identified as a short-term priority since two thousand seventeen. So this is nothing new and it has not been addressed. And so we just wanted to, I just wanted to identify and reemphasize that this is a known area for flooding since two thousand fifteen and here we are, ten years later, eight years later from that final report. So I just want to emphasize that.
Thank you.
John Mosier, I live at fifteen hundred East Main Street. And I, we flooded two thousand fifteen. We had four foot of water in the house. This time we flooded, we only had about a foot and a half in the house because I was actually home and opened up the doors and let the water flow through. But two thousand fifteen, I had video of the flooding and I brought it up to the, when they had that meeting at the school there, I brought it up. But I've lost, that tablet has crashed on me and of course my DVR doesn't save, you know, for ten years. But they said the engineer that designed that area lived in the area at the time. And he said that they didn't take the hundred-year plan into effect when they built that area. The problem that they did was they came down and at the drains, instead of taking the pipe out and putting bigger pipe in, they just added more vents for the water to go in. If we get a two-inch rain in, in three hours, I have water up to my garage. And of course, I do live at the lowest spot, but still from, from my garage to the street area is about a four-foot drop in rise. And with a two-inch rain, I still will get water almost up to my garage. If nothing else, why don't, why didn't ten years ago, they give us, you know, put us into a flood plain? Classify us as flood plain area? Because we can't get insurance, or we could, but it's gonna cost us more than what it's worth. You know, I, I washed away my yard. That first year, two thousand fifteen, I spent over five thousand dollars redoing my yard. Two months later, we had another rain and my yard is gone. I haven't even messed with my yard anymore. I just said, "I don't care what it looks like" because it's just gonna wash away. Why should I be spending money when the plan wasn't even put into effect to fix nothing? People come down there and they looked at it and it says, "Oh, we can do this, can do this." That's all we heard. Nobody, nobody took any action. And I understand that it's gonna take money to fix and over time, but ten years ago, that's what they said, but they haven't done nothing about it yet. You know? Heck, if I would see a backhoe come down there and dig a hole once a week, that would make me feel better because I know they, somebody was doing something. And here we're supposed to get, it's supposed to rain all week now, so what are we gonna do? Flood again? We can't stay home from our jobs to protect our property, you know? So I just, I would just assume that we, we get reclassified into a flood zone so we can at least help ourselves out, you know, with buying insurance. Because the city's not going to do nothing for us. We found that out ten years ago. All we heard was talk. We didn't see no action, you know? They even came down and looked in the pipes and seen that they're only four foot, you know? What kind of drainage system is that? You have a four-foot pipe running from underground to control all this water where all that water just comes from the north and just keeps piling up, piling up, and piling up, you know? And then I still think a lot of the construction that's being going on, because I've noticed since the construction's been going on down there, that it's getting worse down there in our area. Whether it's because construction's not done yet or it's not been done right, I don't know.
Your house backs up to a concrete channel, correct?
It used to be concrete.
Okay.
They didn't concrete that in until after the flood.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just, alright, looking at it right now.
Yep, they, yeah, they didn't concrete that in until after the flood, which, yeah, makes it, it makes that water go down that ditch a lot faster. But then when it gets down south to that pond down there on Main Street, that's already full, it just starts backing up. Yeah, you know? So and luckily enough, we didn't have a storm shelter in two thousand fifteen, but this year we did and we had to pump it out. If we'd have been in there... Matter of fact, that year, the neighbors across the street did have a storm shelter and they had to come out of it. So, you know? Because if, 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 if we are reclassified as a flood zone, we could at least get an above-ground shelter. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Richard Pierce. Currently, I reside two four four five Fox Lane in Blanchard, but I also own the property fourteen twenty-four East Main Street here in Moore. I rented out to my mother and her husband and I got a call at ten thirty, ten thirty at night, ten, ten thirty, stating that the house was flooding. I was told that it did flood back in two thousand fifteen, May sixth, that everybody's said. I'm John's neighbor. I live just to the north of him, or to the west of him. And, yep, so I high-tailed it over to my mom's house and the whole garage, about a foot and a half of water. The storm shelter completely flooded and about two inches of water in the house. But the problem is, the house was built in nineteen eighty-four, so it doesn't have air ducting in the ceiling. It's all in the slab. So it completely flooded. I pulled out twenty-seven chopped-back fulls of water out of that slab. And it's not, I mean, I, I understand the, the argument could be, you know, we, we get four inches of water in, in one hour, three inches in one hour. But the problem is, is not just that because I have a, I have a sewer- is, is not just that because I have a, uh, I have a sewer manhole in my backyard. It's access to the city. I have, every time there's rain, city has to come through, hit it with high-pressure water, break up all the, the branches to clear it. And there's nothing more disgusting than three times of owning that house, that sewer backing up in my backyard with public waste. It is just horrible. And the fact that it can flood from the street and get all the way into my garage and, and in my backyard, it's also flooding from where you said that, uh, concrete barrier is. I had two feet of water in my backyard, completely flooded through my shed, completely flooded through my whole garage. My mother and her husband lost all of their belongings that were in the garage. John, he lost a whole bunch of TVs that were sitting in his garage. And luckily I only got a half inch of water in the house, but again, it filled my HVAC system completely up and there's probably eight to 10 grand worth of damage in there. So I, I, again, I understand the argument of, you know, we can only prepare for what we can prepare for, but like he said, it's been 10 years. I've owned, I've owned the house for five years now and I, I would like to see something done, especially with the waste, or with the drainage, but also with sewer system. I mean, just because again, that is, three times it's backed up in my yard and it is just absolutely disgusting to see that, to own a house and look outside and see toilet paper floating in your backyard. And there's nothing that I can do about it. But again, I don't want to beat a dead horse. That's, that's exactly what I'm trying to get at is that's why we're all here. We want to see something happen. It's been 10 years now. I understand it'll cost a lot of money. I understand there's a lot of planning towards it, but, uh, whatever you guys can do, we're all for it. We just want to see some change. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, anybody else?
I'm Teresa Mosher. I'm John's wife, 1500 East Main Street, and I just wanted to add that my daughter's car, she drives a Honda Fit and it was, you know, parked at our house. It filled up to the seats with water and so we had to have that repaired as well too. So I just kind of wanted to give you all a little bit more of a visual of how high that was. So to fill a car up and of course, you know, after the accident that happened, you know, it just, it scares you.
Was she parked in the street or?
Yeah, she was parked in the street right in front of our house. That's correct. So, thank you.
It's all went to the door line of our property.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
2010, there was a Civic, a Honda Civic parked across the street and not even the low spot that you could barely see the top of the car.
Hi, my name is John Eisen. My wife Jessica's here as well. I'm at 116 South Morgan Drive, um, just right behind you and really close to Main Street, of course. Uh, we live at the lowest point at Morg, South Morgan Drive. Uh, this is, uh, not the first time this happened to us. It happened on April 19th, uh, the most recent one that everyone's referring to. Um, I have a brick mailbox out front, which is pretty traditional type mailbox that many of you probably have, to give you a visual of how high the water was above, uh, my mailbox. Um, if you're standing on the curb, that's about to the bottom of my chin. Uh, I have two children, uh, two teenagers, um, and just, just, I don't, we haven't said this yet, but, uh, my heart breaks for the family, uh, and more that lost a couple people in that flood. Um, I'm really grateful today that I have a roof over my head and that my family is okay, but that flood put my wife, my children, my mother at risk, uh, big time. Walking into my backyard, I had water up to my chest and so you need to know that this is very, very serious. Um, in our area, uh, living at the bottom of a hill, uh, I have graduated from high school in this town. I went to Westmore High School. I've raised my children in this town. I have lived here a long time. I love this city of Moore and we have been resilient through a lot of storms before. Um, but this is scary, like this whole situation with not knowing what you're going to do. I, I own almost nothing now because of this. All, you were talking about your cars, all three of our vehicles were parked in the driveway, not even in the street and they all flooded. Um, my daughter just started driving. She just turned 16, just got her first car that we worked hard for to pay for. It's gone. Luckily, uh, we were able to fix it, um, but truthfully, it should be totaled, but we were able to fix it. Uh, we have a lot of situations like that. We're trying to just make it work. Um, I haven't been in a situation in a long time where I've not had a pair of shoes. Um, I'm grateful today to have a pair of shoes and people gave me really expensive shoes to wear even. It's, it's, it's amazing the blessings that have come through, but, um, you guys really, I, I know you've heard it a bunch, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, uh, if you guys could please do something to help us, that would be great.
What was your street number again on South?
I'm 116 South Morgan Dr, Drive. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Come on.
My name is Russ Lane. I live at 1400 East Main Street and our house too flooded this last time. We do have an in-ground cellar that flooded in 2015, flooded in 2024 and it flooded again this time, plumbed to the top of the door. I'm 77 years old. There's no way I could open that door with two foot of water on top of it. We put in an above-ground cellar in, uh, spare room that we have. My garage had 13 inches of water in it. The sheet rock in my house is cut up 18 inches. Uh, I left tonight to come here, the sheet rock man is still there. The estimate for just drying it out and cutting the sheet rock, not replacing it, is $22,000. In 2015, I spent $60,000 redoing my house from that flood. I did take out insurance. It was $504 a year. For some reason, I quit paying it in 2023 because I was told this, that was a hundred-year flood. This was only 6.1 inches of rain. 2015 was 8.2. So I understand the 2015. I don't understand this one. We're not preparing for it. We know it's going to happen. It's happened twice, three times. How many more times does it have to happen? We're considering moving. I've been in Moore since 1976, raised two daughters. I have four grandsons here in Moore. Uh, all of them have gone to the high, Moore High School. Uh, we lived on Morgan before we bought the house on Ramblin' Oaks and Main Street. Uh, but we were up high on Morgan. We were at 220. So we need help. I'm retired, my wife's retired. We don't have that kind of money to keep putting out. Uh, that's all I got. We need help.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't have anything prepared and I'm short. Um, I live on 120 South Morgan Drive, right next to John and, um, last.
What's your name?
Oh.
Your name?
Yvette Arroyo, or Mendoza. Um, I was also flooded, uh, this past flood, our house, um, our garage, our living room, our dining room and kitchen and our son's room. Um, we're all flooded. Right now, we're having to figure out our own accommodations because we don't have any flood insurance. Oh, sorry. And last year, my car flooded after I had just paid it off. Um, this is a very frustrating situation, I'm sorry. Um, and it's very frustrating to have to find accommodations for my son. He's nine months old and having to just go around with him and trying to find somewhere to stay, um, is really difficult. And it's difficult whenever you can't get insurance that will cover and won't cover you until after 30 days when the flooding is happening now. And if we were in a flood zone, they would cover the next day or it's just difficult. Um, I hope you understand the situation. I know it's going to take time, um, but I want to give my address out just so you know that I'm also, we are also included. Um, it would be easier if we were considered a flood zone, um, and if nothing's going to be done, um, just so that we could get the flood insurance so that something can be done. Um, but just if we're not in a flood zone, make us not a flood zone, basically. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak before we wrap things up? Again, all I can tell you right now is what I said is that we've had discussions, I've had discussions with our city manager and, uh, assistant city manager Jerry Eiler, they're working, they actually have a plan and, um, some cost projections of that, but there's work that they still need to do so we can get a, um, an idea of what this is going to cost us and then we've got to figure out how to pay for it, which is going to be the, the big issue because it will be the entire city that'll be paying for it. But yeah, I agree, we need to do some things. We know where some of the issues are, so we at least need to start and I hope that we'll be able to do that soon. Anyone, council, anybody? No?
No, just seeing, kind of getting a visual of with what people here have said and what other people have emailed or texted me, um, it's pretty apparent, kind of visually, kind of what's going on here when you look at it from a satellite view. And so, uh, anyway, just the same thing, we're, we're going to keep looking at it and I would like to ask Brooks about our city manager, what all options we have and what flood zones entail and things like that and get some more information to see what we can do.
Mayor, you said you have a time line? Can we, can we give a time line on that?
No, I can't give you one today. Uh, we, they're working on it and, uh, just keep reaching out to me or to your council person, or you can contact our city manager directly and as we're, get the information and we're ready to present it, we will, I promise. Okay. Items from the city couns, council or trustees? Uh, items from city manager.
Mayor and council, as you know, we did have a firefighter injured in a structure fire this morning. I would like, uh, Chief Marler to come to the podium and give us just a brief update on his condition.
Mayor and council, uh, about 9:30 this morning, we received a report of a structure fire in the area of Main Street in North Morgan. Upon arrival, crews experienced a fire at that structure and under activities of trying to suppress the fire and get that extinguished, uh, one of our firefighters, uh, was on the roof in the midst of trying to ventilate that structure. Um, and as it's been reported in the news, he fell through the roof into the structure and received some injuries from that. Uh, he's in stable condition at a area hospital receiving care for those injuries right now.
Okay. Thank you and thanks to all of your firefighters. Yep. For what they do. Item 12 is executive session. Section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session and discuss the following items. Item A is discuss, consider and if deemed appropriate, take po, possible action regarding Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality in NOV number W20805-24-1 and authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B4. Make a motion that we convene to executive session. Second. Okay, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louie Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, will be an executive session. Thanks everybody for coming and sharing with us.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks.[1407.42]
Make a motion that we convene to executive session. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, will be in executive session. Thanks, everybody, for coming and sharing with us.
Thanks, Mayor.